Okay, it is seven o'clock and I will call this meeting to order. Janet, if you could call the roll, please.
Councilmember Chupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Here.
Councilmember Clovin?
Here.
I do not see Vice Mayor Diaz. And Mayor Juan.
I am here, thank you. Hopefully Vice Mayor Diaz will be able to join us, but if not, that's okay. We have a quorum, so we can continue. Item two is to pledge allegiance. As he enters the building, I'll wait a moment if he wants to. All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome, Vice Mayor Diaz. All right, item three is public comment on non-agenda items. I have one speaker card, but if anyone has comment on non-agenda items, now is your time. At this time, I'd like to recognize Mr. Impostato?
You've got to say it.
Mr. Impostato?
Impostado.
All right, thank you. Please.
Councilmembers, thank you. My name is...
That's the start button. My name is Vito Impostato. I'm Assistant Chief with Contra Costa County Fire, and I'm just here on behalf of Chief Burchard, just to give a few little updates about what's going on with the fire district. Start with some, just a point of personal privilege, if you will. Twenty years ago in March, I was in our academy and my first assignment was right here at Station 11. It was not super exciting, which I think is good for the city, right? But I did catch a few really good fires as a rookie. And in that same vein, Vice Mayor Diaz, I think you were at our graduation. We just graduated 28 recruits that just started this last week. The fire district, much like the universe, continues to expand. As you know, this last year, we picked up East Contra Costa County, which responds into Clayton and the area on Morgan Territory and Marsh Creek as well. March 1st, we're gonna do a contract with the city of Pinole. We'll open up a station that's been closed out there for at least a decade. So it may not seem like those expansions have an effect on your city, but they do because they have much more capacity within our fire district. When a bigger incident further out from here happens, we get to leave, for the most part, Engine 11 here in quarters and not move them up to cover other areas. So it's good all the way around for everybody. Just a few updates for the city. The Cal Fire Amador contract has been extended, so the Sunsign Station continues to stay open and available even in non-wildland season. In the summer, when the wildland season kicks off again, they'll have two units out there, but right now, there's just one unit out there. And then the last thing is the Cal Fire Fire Hazard Severity Zone Maps are gonna be coming out this summer. From the information that we have, there will be some areas that the city will have designated as very high. I believe on February 27th, there's a meeting with city managers to talk about what the maps mean and how that's gonna affect everyone. That's what's going on. We had a lot of rain, right? And that affected the fire district as well. On days like today that we have a high wind event, we've upstaffed our hand crew to be here overnight. They usually just work during the days, so we add capacity and we have down trees and all that kind of stuff. They come out to help us. So that's where we're at with the fire district. Thank you for your time, and it's good to see you all.
Thank you very much. If there's anyone else that has a comment on non-agenda items? Janet, is there anyone online?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
All right, then I will close public comment on non-agenda items. Next is the consent calendar. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I will open this item up for public comment. There's public comment on the consent calendar? Janet?
I do not have any hands raised on this item either.
All right, then I would look for a motion on the consent calendar.
A move approval?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Janet, would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Chupiano?
Aye.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Clovin?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
Yes.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. Thank you.
Testing. There we go.
All right. Yeah, I don't know. Next is identified recognitions and presentations. This is administering the oath of allegiance by the police chief, if you would like to take the lectern.
Thank you. There we go. All right, thank you. Today's a very special day, and this is the kind of things that really are the most enjoyable part of being a chief of police, and that's hiring new people and promoting people. It's always good to see people come and support the people that are getting promoted or hired, and it's good to see the smile on the face of the person that's getting promoted because it really means a lot to them, and it means a lot to us to continue to improve and add to our command staff. So I'd like to thank you guys all again for approving that. And let me just tell you a little bit about our new sergeant, Tori Jarvis. Tori is a 2006 graduate from Oceanside High School. After she graduated from high school, she joined the U.S. Navy, and she was in the Navy from 2007 to 2012. When she got out of the Navy, she went to college. She got her bachelor's degree from Mercy College and a master's from the University of San Diego. She attended the Contra Costa County Law Enforcement Academy in 2017. She then worked a short time with Pittsburgh PD before she got smart and came over here to work with us here in Clayton. Since she's been here, she's been the detective for our agency. Being as small as we are, we don't have a full-time detective, so she willingly took on that additional duty, and she's done a good job at that, and she'll continue to do that. She's also our human trafficking liaison, and she's working with, the county's got a human trafficking task force, and so she's been attending those meetings, and she's going to be our liaison on that. And that's obviously something that's going on everywhere in the country, so unfortunately, it's probably going on right here under our nose as well. So she's gonna work on being with the task force and trying to find the violators and the victims and help them out. She's our first female sergeant since Shelley Crane retired, and I was trying to remember when Shelley retired. It was around 2007, so it's been quite a while, so it's really nice to have a female sergeant back and get a different perspective. And I'm gonna do my best at reading this oath. It's small writing, but I'm gonna do my best, so.
Come on, where are we? We did it right here?
Let's see how this works. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Tori Jarvis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Con... I'm sorry, say it again.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
You did it. Before we let Tori say a few words, we're gonna have her dad come up and pin her badge on her. And this is really cool for me because her dad worked with my dad for many years, so it's really cool to see him again. And it's my honor to hand this to you and let you pin it onto her.
I just wanted to extend my thanks to you guys for approving this and giving me the opportunity. I love the city. I love working for this city, and it's given me so many opportunities and places that I probably wouldn't have been able to go at another department. Of course, want to thank my dad for coming all the way from Idaho, my mom who's watching on live right now, and then just all my friends and family that support me along the way.
That's great, awesome. All right, we will move on to item six, and that is reports from our city manager.
Can we all say congratulations to her first?
You may. Please.
Point of order, sorry. Congratulations, Sergeant.
Thank you very much.
It's a pleasure to see you in this position. Very happy for you.
All right.
All right, thank you, mayor and city council members. Just a couple of announcements. First of all, we have Joanna Jin here with us tonight in Mala's place, so we are well taken care of in the area of our city attorney duties. Also wanted to let folks know, and you're all aware, that the City Hall closure on Wednesdays to the public began last Wednesday and will continue going forward until further notice. That's gone well so far and has accomplished the intended purpose of allowing staff to devote uninterrupted time to a lot of tasks that they weren't able to get to. So that's something that's going well. The Budget and Audit Committee meeting is going to be this Monday, the 27th, so we'll be talking about mid-year budget, our investment policy, and our ARPA funds at that. So that will be an important meeting leading up to the March 21st meeting where the full council, where you all will be considering the mid-year budget. And then I also wanted to introduce to you our new finance director, Angeline Loffler. She is sitting here to your right in the front, and she comes to us via the cities of Berkeley and Mountain View, as well as the state of California, where she has been an auditor, been a supervising auditor, as well as worked in the area primarily of revenues in budgeting. She worked in the private sector before those jobs that she did. She has a Bachelor's of Science of Accounting from California State University, East Bay, and so she's been here for about a week now and just super excited to have a full-time, permanent, qualified finance director. So just like to introduce you all. I know you've stopped by and said hi to her up at the office, but introduce you all in the community to Angeline and welcome her. And that is all of my comments for tonight. Thank you.
If you'd like to introduce yourself, you're welcome to, or not, no pressure.
I think you did it.
Perfect, all right.
You said everything.
Perfect. All right, well, I am super excited that you're here. Welcome. We met earlier this week, but I just wanted to say again, I'm so glad you're here and you have, we have a lot of things for you, so this is gonna be awesome.
Thank you.
Okay, next is public hearings, which we have none. That's item seven. Item eight is action items. Here, action item 8A is the continuing the use of hybrid meetings for City Council, Planning Commission, and the Budget and Audit Committee meetings. I will turn it over to our visiting city attorney.
Thank you, Mayor Juan. With the COVID pandemic, the city has utilized AB 361 for virtual or remote meetings. The city has continued to conduct hybrid in-person and virtual meetings following the declaration of the emergency related to the COVID-19 pandemic, which has increased public participation. However, there is no legal requirement to utilize hybrid meetings. So if the city council and planning commission would continue, would like to continue to conduct hybrid meetings, it can utilize AB 2449, which allows for officials to participate remotely, but under limited circumstances, so long as there is just cause or an emergency circumstance. And of course, in that situation, it's kind of difficult to set up last minute for hybrid meetings, so the recommendation would be to continue to conduct hybrid meetings for the city council, planning commission, and budget and audit committee. And so again, the recommendation is for the continued use of hybrid meetings for those three bodies to allow for greater participation and to utilize AB 2449. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, are there any questions for Ms. Jin?
Last question. Sorry. I just have a question on the fiscal impact and understanding why there are different costs associated for the different meetings. If you can break that down for us, and maybe it's because, it could be because of the frequency of them, but I just want to be sure why there are different prices for each meeting.
So the city council meeting would be our full-service meeting, and it has different camera angles and an operator in the back room, and that's why it runs $500 to $600 per meeting, depending on how long the meeting is well, but that's approximate. The planning commission meeting has a still shot that would show the dais along with this angle here, as well as the speaker's podium, and that only requires a setup, and then staff would operate the hybrid meeting, the Zoom meeting, in that case. In writing the staff report, I realized that we've been using for the most recent budget and audit committee meetings, the same format as the city council meeting, so it does allow for the different shots. But in seeing how the planning commission meetings are operated and the relatively low attendance by participants outside of the people that are at the meeting in person, I would recommend that we go with a planning, if the council wants to continue to use the hybrid meeting format, go with the planning commission style meeting that would cost about $200 a meeting as opposed to $500 to $600. So we could save $300 to $400 per meeting. And those occur monthly, 12 times a year if they stay on schedule, so that would result in a savings of $2,500, $3,000 by using the different format.
Thank you, that's helpful. And then, say it again, so for the city council meetings, we're panning to the different, so right now, it's only on me? I'm trying to understand what the difference is between...
Correct. So when you're speaking, it's panning on you, and then when I'm speaking, it would come over to me. So it just gives a better view of the entire room. There's also a view of the audience as well, so it has five or six different camera angles at a city council meeting.
Okay, and planning commission is not using that currently?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You gotta pick where you sit based on how good of a camera angle you want.
Well, I was trying to understand if it was because they're in the back actually manually doing that, or is that also including staff, their time, or just the Zoom feature? I was trying to understand what the costs were.
So it's basically, there's someone in, operating the system, and then all the meetings have a little bit of time to prepare the meeting for presentation on the city website.
I think the cost of the Zoom component is negligible, and it's essentially the labor associated with the administering of the meeting. All right, at this time, I'd open this for public comment. If there's anyone in the room that has a comment, please, this is your time.
Hi, my name is Sandy Johnson. Hi to mayor, vice mayor, and council members. I don't know if I ought to comment, but I was wondering about maybe a question. Once you take this under submission, or not submission, but when you talk about it tonight, how long will there be a time limit on the length of time that you decide to keep Zoom meetings going? Because I think $500, if it's per council meeting, that's pretty high. And also commenting about how many people are actually, average number this year, or however long to, you know, decide how long, how many people are actually on the Zoom meetings? That would warrant $500 per council meeting. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment on this item?
Okay. I just want to say that I, the cost is a factor. I see that. But having the city council meetings and the planning commission meetings and the budget committee meetings on Zoom is a huge help for the community. It's more inclusive for people with disabilities, people who can't get out of the house, for one reason or another, can't leave a loved one. And for me, I travel for work, so sometimes I'm sitting in a hotel room, watching all of you do your work, and that's really nice for me to, and I feel more involved in the community. So my vote, which I don't get, is to keep the Zoom component if possible. So I appreciate your consideration.
Okay, Janet, is there anyone online that has a comment?
I do have one hand raised. Rosie, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Hi there.
Hi there.
I agree with the gentleman who just spoke. I think it's very important to continue the hybrid meetings. It's been invaluable to many of us who can't make the meetings in person, so I hope the city council will continue to use this valuable tool. And if there can be a cost statement, as Mr. Burnell pointed out, even for just removing something like the panning, I take oh for it and keep the hybrid. Thank you.
And Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. Is anyone would like to start?
Yeah, well, I just want to say I completely concur with Mr. Levy. I think we need to include the public in as much of our discussion, and accessibility is paramount. And I don't know if this affects the recording the next day as per Larry's services, but some people who can't even watch it live are Zooming in the next day and watching the recording, and I just think we need to be as accessible as possible to the public, and I think the cost has value.
Based on my experience on the planning commission with conversations around Pearlie Housing and the Olivia, and then again with my experience around the Olivia, again, I've seen this room completely packed with people, and people are not able to get in here. I think it'd be challenging for us to say, oh, we're gonna just do this meeting if we think it's gonna be packed. I think that if we're gonna make a precedent, it's about being as transparent as possible with every meeting, and to make sure that people who desire to be present can speak on an issue during the meeting. So in that capacity, just having a broadcast is not good enough. I'm all in favor of keeping a hybrid protocol. As far as cost of doing a single camera angle versus panned-in shots on me speaking directly right now, I'm okay with a single shots and to keep costs down, but regardless, we need to have everybody watching, and if they want to speak, they get the opportunity to do so.
I have mixed feelings about continuing the Zoom. I believe if you want to speak to the city council, you can come down here and do that. And in the past, when we had contentious items, in my personal view, the use of the Zoom and the computer was a way to screen yourself from being challenged in person. I think you need to come out if you have a strong opinion. I guess I'm not in favor of extending it just for on and on and on. I like to set a time limit when we might review it again, and I don't know if that's six months, two months, one week, I don't know. But my opinion is that I would like to see us move to getting people back into the hall here and make their presence known, and seeing them talk eye to eye with us as opposed to being behind a computer. Thank you.
Did you have a...
I guess I would have to, one, I completely agree with Councilmember Chupiano, Mr. Levy, Ms. Straka, Councilmember Clovin. So I'll just say ditto. But then I would also ask, how full were the chambers where people are actually coming to look at you eye to eye? Because I think that this is probably, this is a nice number. Like, this is not often that people come in person and actually look us in the eye. And to Ms. Johnson's question, how many people are really on Zoom, right? So we have a lot of people who might be listening in on Zoom, they might not be calling in or speaking, but I do think that we have to be transparent and allow them to actually see us as we are and to hear real time, because it actually might give them something to think about as opposed to watching it on the video that goes to CCTV the next day. I know that in about 2014, 2015, that was how I watched my meeting, and I only saw one gentleman sitting in the audience on CCTV. He got up and he spoke, and then he left, and then the council was literally talking to themselves. So I don't know that it's that productive. I think if there are five people on Zoom and they couldn't make it in, I think at least it's better to have some interaction with folks as opposed to none. And I would say, though, that I'm all for limiting the panning, if that's what's causing the additional costs. But then I'd also ask, what would be the cost if we were to get rid of the Zoom, and I'm not in favor of doing that at all, so don't misunderstand me, but I'm curious, what is the cost for just having it go to CCTV like we used to before? Does anybody know that offhand?
I had a conversation with, in the past, and it was fairly negligible.
Okay, so it wasn't even the $200 or so? Okay.
Because we have essentially the equipment already.
So then the cost then is for staff to be here manning it, and so we're paying for the labor and the hours for them to be back there. Is that the full cost?
That's correct.
Okay. I'm still in favor of paying that small amount for us to have transparency and access to everybody in the community.
First, I would try to address Ms. Johnson's question. I think we, it's our discretion how long we would want to continue. If we want to put a sunset on it, that's available, but given the predilections of my fellow council members, I don't think that we would put a sunset on it, just because, I mean, I too really value the ability to reach more people. So I, you know, I'd be totally in favor of continuing. As for the cost, I mean, it's one of those things that's just the cost of doing business, and it's not really a cost play, it's more of an accessibility play. And so I would say, the panning is fine. I think the panning is actually good on council meetings because there are a variety of views represented, and it kind of is helpful. At the planning commission where it's, and even at the budget committee meetings, I think those are, those are more procedural, and so I don't think that's really as necessary. So I'd be in favor of curtailing that ability to do that, but not limiting the participation And other than that, the more people that participate, the better. So I don't really think there's much more than that. I do, I would encourage people to come down if they want. It's great to see folks, but it doesn't, the scheduling doesn't always work for everyone. And so when it doesn't, then you can do that. But if you are watching our meetings from a hotel room while you could be doing other things, I don't know. I question your judgment. But other than that, I do, you know, I do recognize that we do lose something when we don't have the direct participation, but I think on balance, we gain more when we have more people on. And as for numbers, one of the things that, you know, we as, when, we as council members are also invited as panelists to the meeting, so when you join as a panelist, you can see the participants. So to answer your question, I think on the low side, we typically get about 10-ish people, and on the high side, it's about 35-ish people. And on the high side, it's about 35-ish people. And it fluctuates. I think it's not static throughout the meeting. Some people will come on and come off, but for the most part, that's about the numbers that I've seen over the past since COVID. So that's, hopefully that addresses your question. And so with that, if there's no other comment, then are you looking for a motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Is there someone that would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to, let me read it properly. Continue the use of hybrid meetings for city council, planning commission and budget and audit committee meetings to allow for greater public participation and the ability to use AB 2449 with the change to no panning on the budget and audit committee meeting to mirror the planning commission meetings.
Second, the motion.
All right. Janet, would you please call them?
Councilmember Trupiano?
Yes.
Councilmember Tillman?
Aye.
Councilmember Cloven?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Diaz?
No.
Mayor Juan?
Aye. And with that, that passes for one. And next, we will move on to item 8B. This is the Endeavor Hall nonprofit rental rate discussion.
Yes.
Please take us away.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item tonight is asking for council to discuss and provide staff direction on what you would like us to bring back to you. So I'll start with that. And we're hoping to end up with a policy that would allow us to administer the nonprofit rate across all the different nonprofits in the community and not have different arrangements for each nonprofit. Over the years, there have been different arrangements made that, that at times has created some confusion and difficulty for staff to administer as well as frustration on the part of the nonprofits. So tonight, we're just asking the city council to establish rates for the nonprofits based upon our current fee schedule, which was adopted, it's for our current fiscal year through June of this year. And, and so there's different options that the city council has on how they would administer or, or set the rates for different types of nonprofits. As a little bit more background, pre-pandemic, the, the usage was about 140 days a year for Endeavor Hall. During the pandemic, that dropped to single digits in, in some of the years. And now we're back up to 150 plus days a year. So the, the hall is heavily used almost, almost every other day and at times for a month at a time or more. And so the, the result of the current policy of the city council where there's, there's been fee waivers given to some organizations, some pay no fees, others pay more, we generate about, or we're expected to generate this year about $32,000 in revenue. And we're expected to waive about $41,000 in revenue. So that's a total revenue that we would have otherwise brought into the city of a little over $70,000. The total cost in this year's budget, including depreciation of about $37,000, is around $74,000. So the cost of fully implementing the fee schedule without any waivers would result in almost full cost recovery for the facility. In light of the fact that some of the nonprofits that have been utilizing the facility over the years may not be able to afford the full rate, one way the council may approach this, and it's on the second page of the staff report, is to, to base the, the fee waiver upon their gross revenues or gross annual revenues. And so if, if it's $10,000 or less, they could use the facility at no cost. If it's, if their revenues are between $10,000 and $50,000, it would be an 80% fee waiver. And for nonprofits that generate more than $50,000 a year in gross revenues, it would be a 40% fee waiver. And in, and I'm not aware of what the, the gross revenues are for the different groups that are currently using this. So I, I just thought these were kind of simple ways of approaching it. And, and so this is at least a starting point for the city council, if you like to consider this type of a, an application to the nonprofits. I also would want to mention that we're talking only about Clayton nonprofits, not nonprofits outside of Clayton when we're talking about this fee waiver. And then the other thing that isn't in the staff report is I think there should be a provision made for nonprofits that would not pay any fee at all to have a limited number of days of usage so that they wouldn't monopolize the, the facility and not allow other nonprofits or paint, fully paying groups to, to be able to enjoy the, the beautiful Endeavor Hall. So with that, I'd like to open this up to the city council for you to discuss and ask any questions that you might. Our community development director, Dana Ayers, is with us tonight. She's been handling the majority with her staff of the rental applications over the past month and a half or so. So she's familiar with how it works and can get into more details. But this, I think, can provide at least an overview for you to start your discussion. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
So in essence, we are receiving less than 50% of our cost of operation, 75 versus 32.
Correct.
That's like 42%. That's correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
I would add context that, that of that amount, about 50% is depreciation. So it's a non-cash cost. So we attribute a portion of the building depreciation to the building itself. And so the actual cost, the cash cost of operation is roughly half of that number.
Okay. So what you're saying is, because I, I'm thinking about it in terms of trying to strive as a goal, receiving at least 50% of the cost of the operation of it.
It's not precise, but about 50% of the cost of the building, when you look at the, the, the financial statements reflect depreciation. And the rest is just utilities, maintenance and other costs. The other one, the non-cash cost is, is essentially sunk and we just spread it out over time.
One of the questions that I have, and I'm sorry, did I cut you off? Okay. And this is either for Director Ayers or, or interim city manager. Are primarily the groups using Endeavor Hall nonprofit organizations? And are they primarily Clayton nonprofit organizations? I mean, the theater company comes to mind immediately and they probably use it on more of a long-term basis. You know, CBCA I know uses it several times throughout the year. So I guess that's my question, right? Nonprofits and are they Clayton nonprofits?
Dean, I'll go ahead and take a shot at this, but yes, the majority of the usage is by Clayton nonprofits. There's other times during the year, last June, there was 15 days utilized that were not necessarily part of, part of Clayton nonprofits. So people do utilize it for baby showers and events, but the, the majority of the time is, is for the nonprofits.
And even those private events like baby showers and weddings and whatnot are, might also be Clayton residents as well. I mean, they certainly don't have to be. I guess my point is I'm, I'm all for supporting the arts and our nonprofit organizations like the garden club and the theater and CBCA and all the folks that support the city and make it a better place to live. So, you know, I'm inclined to certainly provide some discount whether we go with this recommendation based on gross annual revenue. And I don't know if we know.
Let's, we'll, we could go to discussion.
That's a whole other discussion, but yeah.
Sure.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions for staff at this time? All right. I would open this for a public comment. If there's anyone that has a comment they'd like to offer, now is the time. Janet?
I do have one hand raised. CW, as I promote you to panelist, if you can please unmute your microphone, you'll have three minutes to speak.
Are you able to hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. It's great to be back in the, in the chamber, even virtually. And I appreciate the sentiment by Councilmember Trupiano. The CBCA, I'm the president of the CBCA, and I think that part of the reason that the, that the numbers have gone up in 2023 is because the CBCA has decided to call Endeavor Hall our home. And when I was on the council, I was on the CBCA Development Committee along with Councilmember Diaz or Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor Diaz. And I'm not sure that the, that the numbers increased during the entire time that I was on the council. But the CBCA has called Endeavor Hall our home this year and, and we're happy to be there. However, some of the fees that we're looking at now would prohibit us from doing some of the things that we've done in the past. For instance, during our barbecue festival, we have a KCBS training class where over 250 Claytonians over the past six years have become KCBS judges, certified judges. And they're able to go all over the country because of that. It's, it's become a stalwart with regard to our barbecue. However, this year, the fee is going to go from nearly $400 to $1,600, which is something that gives us pause at CBCA to possibly look elsewhere. I would hate to see that we would have to go from our charming downtown location to somewhere else. Of course, that's in the, that's in the offing for us if we can't get some kind of relief. And, and we are in the top tier of the relief category that you're talking about. So bottom line is CBCA here to support the community. Our motto is for the good of the community. And, and we are looking forward to staying at Endeavor Hall and continuing our support for the city. I'm hoping that you'll consider that as you go forward in your decision. And I thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you. Is there any other comment?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any other hands raised on this item.
Okay. I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion. I, I would like to start off by saying, I did want, this was an area that I know that we have all spoken with folks around town. I, there's a number of programs that essentially cannot function without the subsidy from the city. And so I wanted, when I, when we started looking at the background, we did find that it was somewhat inconsistent in how the various groups utilized Endeavor. And so I thought it would be best to have, have this brought back so that we can kind of put it to bed and make sure that it's very clear on what we want to do. So that was, that's kind of the, the genesis of this. I, I, I look at the, the figures here and I, I think maybe I would tweak a little bit, but at, at a minimum, I would say the, there, there is no way that like things like the theater program or like, you know, as CW mentioned, they, you know, it just becomes cost prohibitive. I know that the garden club uses the facility for two days a year and, you know, charging this rate to them for, you know, what I think is a great Mother's Day activity to go buy plants down at the parking lot. My kids love going down there to do that. And those types of things become prohibitive, cost prohibitive when we charge these rates. So I, I would look to formalize what we, you know, what we feel is appropriate for that. So that's just, that's the basis for this.
I think what CW meant was that he and Councilmember Diaz, when they were on charge of the marketing committee for Endeavor Hall, not CBCA, they were in charge of the marketing committee for Endeavor Hall. Now, that committee has been removed. It doesn't exist anymore. But I can tell you that I went to a private party there this past weekend and that entity paid over $1,000 plus for the use of that, that, that evening. I totally agree, we need to have a fixed schedule that makes sense for our staff so they have clarity and simplicity around how to charge different entities. But I think we're still missing opportunities in how to market that charming building to other entities and get retail income from that at market rate. And I think that, that was dropped and I think we should somehow fix it up again or find somebody to start marketing it for here comes the bride, et cetera. There are ways that, there are ways to market the facility we have not been thought about. So this is my comments.
Yeah, I'm glad you explained why we were talking about it again now because I thought we were going to do it when we had the fee discussion. And I know that, that we just had the discussion and we had said, okay, well, this will be it and we'll talk about this again later in next year and we'll actually like set a limit. But I agree, these programs cannot exist if, they don't have the money to do it, especially the theater program. I do recall that conversation that we talked about maybe setting aside a sleeve of money for, for the arts. And maybe that's something that we can talk about too tonight and figuring out if that's how we want to handle it and put things in different buckets. I realize that she's, the theater program, that we have nonprofit fees, but maybe if we can decide that we want to use some ARPA funds or it's all in the, the general fund now, but maybe if we want to think about setting aside money for folks who have these particular types of programs, setting a limit on how much they can have. And then they don't have to come back every year. We just know that it's part of our budget process. I think that's something that we should consider. But then I also know that, to your point, the garden club, if they're meeting two days a week, they, I mean, two days a year. Thank you. They can't afford that either. So I do think there's a happy medium. These, these limits here concern me a little bit.
Yeah, that was, I didn't, I'm not sure about that.
Yeah, that concerns me. I would want to tweak those a lot. But everybody that's using it is definitely giving back to the community and I think we have to keep that into consideration. And to Councilmember Cloven's point, I've rented it out. I throw, I threw a killer sweet 16 birthday party there. And so I, I do think that we can think of ways that, and maybe even change what the fees are. I rent the park, I rent the grove. There's lots of places and I think that our fees, they're pretty cheap for renting the things that people are getting. So I do think that we need to look at that whole thing in totality, not just for nonprofits.
Yeah, the, sorry, just a little bit more context. The reason why I wanted to bring up Endeavor now, outside of the fee discussion, which we will have, is because for Endeavor, the theater program is starting, I don't recall the exact date.
I think it's now.
It's now. And their performance will be the month of March, essentially. And then they will be, that performance will be over. And so if we were to wait for the fees, the master fee discussion, which would probably come back based on the information we've gotten, you know, sometime middle of the year, they would receive an exorbitant invoice that would essentially bankrupt them. So that, that's why we're talking about now. That is one, that was the catalyst, but if we're going to do it, then I think, you know, the objective standard that we establish is, is the way to go. So that's, again, a little bit more context. As for the figures, the, the idea of having a 100% discount for a small group, that, that's essentially specifically for things like the garden club, like the historical society who do meet there. But they are essentially having a meeting. It doesn't cost a lot to the city. The added maintenance cost is essentially nothing and depreciation is going to be there regardless of whether it's used or not. And so for those entities, it feels, I mean, this is really just a judgment call, but it just feels appropriate that they don't really pay. But as our city manager indicated, trying to find a, a middle ground where you can have that, but then not have the same, any other group be able to say, well, I want to use it 100% of the time, that doesn't seem appropriate either. So having a, a limit of utilization is, that's what that's intended to do. I would probably just have the second tier be like much higher. Because I know that, you know, the theater company has a high level of expense in operating their program. And so when you add up their, their gross revenues, it'll probably kick over these tiers, but their profit is very low, if, if anything. So, so I would suggest, you know, we have something that says 80% for like 100,000 or less. But the, and so the reason why we have the 80% like 100,000 or less. But the and so the reason why we have the 80%, 80% was the rate that was historic 80% discount was the rate that was historically offered to the theater company for the past many, many years. It is somewhat of an arbitrary number, but when we look at the math for the overall utilization of the facility, the if you were to apply a rate based on the revenue that we get on an annual basis, kind of normalized, and then apply that to the number of days used, and then calculate that as your discount, it works out to roughly 80% anyway. So I'm not sure if that's how that number was originally derived, but it does seem to work. So I would rather than upset the apple cart and have something change in the whole dynamic of how their business model operates, it seems it seems appropriate to me to continue that and just have it so that it doesn't have to come back all the time. I would probably just raise the number to like 100, or 150, or 200, or something like that. Either of those are fine. And then I would probably put the 40%. I'd probably make that 50% instead.
And Ron, can you just repeat again what you said earlier about availability? Is there very limited availability throughout the year? Is it almost always rented out, did you say?
So it's rented out approximately 150 days a year. But I'm going to let Dana maybe answer that in a little bit more detail for you, Community Development Director Ayers, and she can maybe fill in some of the details.
Okay, hold on, hold on one second. Let's have Director Ayers address the question first.
So I'm going to qualify this a little bit with I've been really watching this for about the last two months since we lost our office assistant. So for the last couple of months, I would say that the it's pretty busy. There's two months out of the year when it's just the theater company, and it's not rentable elsewhere. Because when the theater company moves their sets in, it's 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 just unusable at that point, because it takes so much space. But otherwise, it's fairly busy. It's been fairly busy the last couple of months. Is that your question?
Yes, thank you.
So if it's 150 days a year, 60 days is a two-month block, then the remainder 90 days is could be evenly distributed for the remainder 10 months, right? Ish, if you do the math?
Somewhat. The theater company also so March and October are their performance months.
Okay.
They rehearse in February and September. So those months are also very busy with a lot of days taken up by CTC, but they're a little more flexible because their sets are not in. So the building is rented for a good part of the rehearsal months. But it could also be, you know, if somebody, you know, somebody wanted to throw a killer Sweet Sixteen birthday party on a Saturday, and it was a rehearsal day, they could adjust.
Okay, thank you.
The only comments I would make are fundamentally, I would support a standardization of the rates of the charges, just fundamentally, more in line with what aims at cost recovery targeting about a 50% cost versus expenses. So if we can if we can aim at recovering 50%, and that's just a ballpark number, but aim at that. And I think that the hall could sure use a lot more marketing. One of the issues when a nonprofit goes in there and has a meeting, even though they don't pay for that, they set up the tables and take them down, which sometimes is a is a challenge for them. And I don't know if you need to increase the cost and have some staff persons, you can have them do all the setup and the and the tear down. That might be something that would be more enhancing to a potential renter of the hall. Those are my comments.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think that we offer that service right now as part of the rental package. It would it would be logistics to figure out how to make that happen. But I mean, if someone were had a desire to pay for it, then I think where there's a will, there's a way. So I guess I think that we're somewhat in agreement here. But I how do you guys feel about the the additive part here where we put a limit on the 100% discount to a certain number of days per year? That's not included in the staff report, but that was mentioned by Ron. I
That seems legitimate. I mean, it sounds like the smaller groups are limited pretty much to a couple times a year anyways. That's not a problem. And I think the other adjustment you wanted to make was to raise the number on the 80% category. So that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah, that yeah. So I'm just trying I'm going one by one, just to see if we're how we're how we're doing. I would say make it like 150, 80%, and over 150, make it 50%.
Well, what is the theater company paying now? I guess that's because they're they're more than anybody else. Are they at an 80% discount, or?
This year's the full rate because the 80% wasn't carried forward. So that's why we're
Oh, yeah, other than this year.
Yes, they're in 80% discount.
80%.
Correct.
Okay.
Can I get some clarification? So in the middle of set season, where they have all the sets on stage, they it's not a matter of they can close the curtains and somebody can rent the facility. It sounds like it's just done and it's gone.
I think it's not just the sets, but it's also the I'm not a theater person. It's also the sound and other technical equipment there that they essentially need to lock up because it needs to be secured. So it's like all the sound system, lighting, and stuff that isn't purely on stage. My understanding is it is throughout the building. And so they during rehearsals, as Director Ayers said, they they don't have all equipment in. And so there's more flexibility. But once the equipment goes in and is set up, then they they don't move it.
I just want to be really conscious is that in making this accommodation for the Clayton Theater Company, we are making a clear decision that we're supporting the arts in this particular case. This is a an arts supportive stance. Because quite frankly, if we did marketing of the facility correctly, and it were used for birthdays, weddings, bar mitzvahs, et cetera, it would generate more income than the Clayton Theater Company would provide for those couple months. I'm just calling a spade a spade. It's legitimate statement. We would make more money if we had marketed it were used for things other than the theater company, which I'm okay with, because I'm a full supporter of the arts. I was in drama geek when I was in high school. So but just want to be clear that if we do this, we're understanding that we're not necessarily getting revenue that would otherwise be able to be generated. And in this statement as we have it, we're making a clear statement, we're supporting the arts in that case.
Well, plus, they're also a long term renter, right? So there is some benefit to that, right? 60 days or more out of the year, they're paying rent. Are they paying rent while they're rehearsing?
Yes.
Yes. So.
Yeah, and I think it's it's legit. We there's a potential that we could earn more money, or not. I don't I think it's it's an unknown, but I think there's a definite potential that that would happen. But like you said, it is, you know, if the if we do not support the arts, then the arts would not exist. So that I think we see this play out in a number of areas, and this is an area where we we can make a difference. So.
Okay, I'm going back to all the other groups too now. So so tell me the increments again. We were saying 10,000 or less in revenue.
Yeah, so what's not here?
Yeah.
So let me just lay it out to what I was thinking, and we can talk about that if we need to. What's not here is the limit on the number of waivers. I had the second tier, instead of 10 to 50, I would go like 10 to 150. And then on the third tier, I'd probably kick it up to 50%. And then I think I'm not sure, but what our city manager mentioned, I think this would these discounts would apply to the nonprofits that are based in Clayton. And so if a nonprofit that was not based in Clayton, they would not receive these same these same rates. They would get the whatever the rate is on the fee schedule.
Go ahead.
So looking at this, I mean, is the intention to to charge CBCA a higher premium than that because their revenue is over $150,000? I mean, I'm trying to I'm just trying to figure out where we're drawing the line here, because they're using it as often. We're making a pretty strong statement that they're now paying 40%.
Well, right now, right now, the rate that I think CW mentioned, it's zero. Like, they don't get any discount. So this would represent a 50% discount on top of or applied to what the current rate that he had mentioned.
I'm just just stating a fact there. They're a pretty critical aspect of our community. And I would argue they're also as critical an aspect as as the arts. And I'm just I just want to be aware of the precedence we're making and potential financial challenges we cause.
Yeah, it is. It is a bit of line drawing. And I would say, things like the theater company, they wouldn't exist. They wouldn't be able to put on the show with that. But the things like CBCA, they're a much larger organization. And so when you it's balancing, trying to make it, it's almost on inability of pay kind of thing. That's why we that's why we carve out things that specifically apply to groups like the garden club or the Historical Society that essentially don't have the revenue to support it. But, you know, a 50% haircut on the nonprofit rate, I feel like is, you know, fair.
And is CBCA not receiving a discount right now? I thought that they were receiving a discount. Thank you, Director. And they have about eight meetings a month.
A year.
A year.
A year.
They meet a lot.
So for their monthly meetings, they have been paying the rate for the weekday rate, which is 144 for three hours or more. In the prior year, 2022, for weekends that they they did they did get some 80% reductions for some of their non monthly meeting events. I think there was a memorial for Rory Richmond dinner. There was a reduced rate charge for that. Weekends when they would when they were renting the building or using the building for part of their festivals, there was a reduced rate.
Okay, thank you.
Don't go anywhere.
Please.
Because as a member, and we'll all recall, and as CW mentioned, we're just now back at Endeavor Hall. We used to meet at Oakhurst. So to the point of, you know, it's being used now, and there's 150 plus days now, as opposed to 140 per year, pre pandemic. I think somebody said a lot of that was probably due to the CBCA renting it out and some of their events that they're having, aside from the so if you take out the CBCA and the theater company, is it being used? And how many days would you have? Just guess.
Okay, give me a minute to do some math in my head. So the theater is probably there 40 days in spring and in fall for their shows. So that's 80. I would say CBCA is there once a month, other than October and and March. So that's another 10 to 20, plus any other events. So I would ballpark that if I'm hopefully everyone's keeping up with the math as I'm saying it out loud, but I'm ball parking that of those 150, about two thirds is CTC or CBCA.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I'm just I don't mind haircuts. I'm just concerned that, well, if it's just a theater company, and we're giving them the 80% haircut, or possibly, what are their revenues now? We don't know?
It's sub 100.
Yes. So they're either going to get 100% or 80%, which means there's no then we're bringing in a smaller amount. And if we were to not have the CBCA there, because as he said, for example, the KCBS barbecue, he mentioned they wouldn't have it there. Then they'd have to find another location, because then their their costs quadruples. It goes from $400 to 16, I think is what he said. I just think we need to be mindful of that, just the revenue that we wouldn't be bringing in if they were to leave again, because they weren't having stuff there before. That's all.
I don't know if you can answer this, and I'm not sure who can. I mean, I'm looking at nonprofit Clayton based nonprofits. And I don't know how many there are, and what their revenues, and who would go, wow, I can get 80% off and start using it more often because now I can use the same metrics as as we're now putting out there. It just it just as unintended consequences that I'm just thinking. It could be additional revenue or or less. I just just throwing that out there.
Yeah, if we have a run on it, we'll have to reevaluate. There's there's definitely a few out there. But I think, you know, we know probably the more prominent ones. So.
Before Director Ayers goes too far back to her seat, sorry. And this could also be for our interim city manager. Have any Clayton nonprofits already paid for their permitting for the year? And don't answer that yet. And if they have, when is this going to be effective? I think if we're trying to so if somebody's already paid, what are we doing about that?
Yeah, so that was the other I know that the the theater company has been invoiced for certain amounts. And I would suggest that because, again, this would bankrupt them, that we would make it retroactive to the first of the year.
Okay, so if we go retroactive to the first of the year, and some other Clayton nonprofit has already paid for their full year permits, and it doesn't meet these requirements that we're setting in place, are we going to go back to them and say, thanks for signing it for your permit, you owe us more money now?
No.
Okay. I just I just think if they're going to be penalized based on the changes we're going to make, I think it's a little rude, right? So I just want us to agree to that.
It feels it would feel unfair to penalize someone. But if they've already paid and their rate would go down, then I would make them whole.
May I add to that? I second Mayor Juan's comment is that if there is a fee that the council will impose, it should be going forward. If it is retroactive, it shouldn't be detrimental to the person.
Thank you.
Okay. So I've made that suggestion. I would make the motion as I as I described. And I would look for a second.
Second.
Sure, I will reiterate for clarity.
Just please, thank you.
I want to get this right. As described with the modifications to say, those in the lowest tier would have a limit on the number of waivers, 100% waivers. What did we say? Did we say three per year or two per year? And then if it were more than that, then they would probably just they would kick up to the 80%. And then the additional change to make the second tier go from 10 to 150, and then a change to the third tier to make the haircut 50%, to increase the haircut to 50% rather than 40%. And then also clarify that this applies to Clayton based nonprofits, and not non Clayton based nonprofits.
And
Thank you. I was wondering if there could be clarification on whether there would be a limit of two or three events for rentals for the first year, so that there's clarity for staff and implementation.
I'm comfortable with three. That covers a long weekend. So.
And the only other clarifying question I have is how are we going to know what their gross annual revenues are? What are we basing that off?
They would have to attest, I guess.
Okay.
Would that be part of the application process, then, that they would have to share what their gross annual revenue would be?
Yeah.
And when we say three days, I'm sorry, are we saying three days? And when we say three days, I'm sorry, are we saying three days, you said, a long weekend, or is it three times?
Three days per year. And I will, I will say, when I do like a business license, you have to attest to your revenues in a similar fashion, so.
I just want to acknowledge that, uh, this pretty much is, well, I appreciate it, it's, 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 it's pretty clear. The only entity this is really punishing by charging more is CBCA. And I'm just, just throwing it out there is that, um, you are, the, by, by putting it like this, CBCA is the only entity that's going to be paying us more as a nonprofit. I can't, don't know of any other nonprofits who are over a hundred fifty thousand dollars that'll be using it. And I just want to just be aware that this is what we're, we're doing to, to our community organization, and just throwing it out there. So we understand that that's the case, and, um, I'm, I have a little, little bit of a challenge with that. But, you know, it's, if we're, we're trying to generate revenue, that's, that's, as, as, as off the back of CBCA, that's what it seems like it's doing, and I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there that that's the case.
So what would we be changing it to, though? Is it a dramatic difference between what they've been paying traditionally and what we would be charging now? What would the difference be?
I mean, their rent, the daily rate, sorry, uh, as I'm serious, I'm looking at the fee schedule, it's a hundred forty-four dollar weekday rate. That's the fee schedule rate, and so a fifty percent haircut on that would be, um, seventy-two dollars versus an eighty percent haircut would be, quick math, twenty-eight dollars, right? So.
I was looking more at the, the wins, they might be using it for the week, weekend events, and they have to be using it for more than just an hour or two? Or they'd be having full day rates and things like?
The Clayton-based nonprofit, a daily weekday maximum is a hundred and forty-four. So, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, it, I wouldn't characterize it as punishing, it's because this does offer the discount on the, um, I don't know what to call it, on the stated rate, or the rate associated with the fee schedule. So it still does offer the fifty percent discount, uh, it just offers a steeper discount to, you know, smaller entities and the arts essentially. So, I mean, it's, it's two and a half, it's the same, same thing, a different way to look at it.
I just want to just acknowledge what it is.
Sure.
And then when GovInvest comes back with our, the recommendations for our master fee schedule, this won't change again, right? This will be?
They will, they will come back with their overall analysis, and we can, at that time, we would be able to take action as we see fit.
Okay.
But I, I would suggest that we're discussing this now, so. Did you? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because this is a request for staff direction, no motion is required. But if there is a consensus from council as to, uh, the tiers and, um, just the staff direction, then staff will come back, uh, with a resolution and will also notice for a public hearing on the fees too, so that council can probably take the appropriate action at that time. Thank you.
Okay. If there's no other comment, then do you have the direction that you need, uh, based on that feedback?
Yes, I believe so, may I repeat it back to you to make sure?
Yes, please.
So we are going to be, uh, the lowest tier will be up to ten thousand dollars, the full fee will be waived, the second tier will be up to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars with an eighty percent fee waiver, and then above one hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be a fifty percent fee waiver. On the lowest tiers, there would be a maximum of three days per year that they would be able to utilize, um, the facility without paying, uh, without paying the, the rate, the nonprofit rate. And this is for Clayton nonprofits only that we're talking about, this, this new policy we're referring to. Yes?
That's accurate.
And what are we doing in the instance when they want to rent it, the lowest tier? So if they want?
Over the three days.
Over the three, are they paying the full rate?
It would kick up to the next tier, the eighty percent haircut.
Kick up to the eighty percent tier.
Okay.
Miss, how did, I wasn't, I was trying to figure out how CW came up with the number from fourteen hundred dollars, uh, four hundred dollars to sixteen hundred dollars? Or what was, I, I, I was about to note.
I'm not sure either.
I, I was trying to figure out how that, how that, how he got that.
Maybe it was aggregating multiple days?
He had a fee of four hundred dollars, he would have been, would have gone to six hundred, and I, I can't see that in, in the fee schedule. I was trying to figure out how he, how he got that. That's notes I wrote down. But that's, I mean, if you're just saying twelve hundred dollars is a pretty substantial fee difference, and that's, I don't know how he, how he figured that, that's.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure.
If it's, if it's, if it has a not, if, just pardon me, I want, just want to be clear that maybe he's incorrect in his, his assumptions. Nonprofits on a weekend, um, per day? I'm just, I'm just reading through it before, before I, we finalize this thing.
Need to make this much bigger.
It's two sixteen, it's two sixteen per hour for nonprofits Clayton-based on the weekends. So if they're holding a, I don't know how long the barbecue course is, but if they're holding it over a week end, and he was getting eighty percent off, hold on, let me do some math too.
Yeah, that's what I'm, I was just trying to figure out how he got that.
He is. Maybe we can clarify if we, uh, invite CW to, to, to respond, because I, I'd love, I'd love to hear the math, but unless you had a comment?
Okay, so I, I think what it is, is keep in mind that, um, he's talking about last year, before the fees went up. So this two sixteen was one ninety-nine last year, so let's just say two hundred for simplicity. Um, if they wanted to rent it on a Saturday last year, um, at, uh, two hundred dollars an hour for eight hours, that's sixteen hundred.
Correct.
And then, they got the eighty percent discount, so they paid twenty percent, twenty percent of sixteen hundred is about three twenty.
I think we paid three ninety-eight.
I'm guessing that's how the math worked.
But they still wouldn't pay sixteen hundred now, they're not going to full price, are they? No, it's fifty percent off, it's still a fifty percent haircut.
Without action from, from us to name, it would be the full.
I see.
Right.
I see.
Without.
Correct.
We would give, so we would, you know, we would direct the fifty percent haircut, so it would be sixteen plus the riser less the fifty percent, which works out to something higher than that. I can't do math.
Mayor Juan, I have promoted CW to panelist if you'd like him to speak.
Sure.
Everyone, everybody, uh, thank you, Mayor Juan, I appreciate that, and, and everybody is correct. You know, bottom line is that the city, the city has quoted us sixteen hundred dollars for the KCBS class that we need to have, which is a, a day-long event on a weekend, uh, prior to the barbecue festival. And that's something that we simply cannot do. And, uh, so, we would have to wind up looking elsewhere for, uh, the ability to have this KCBS class. As, you know, it's literally full every year that we do it. So, uh, I'm not even sure with a fifty percent haircut that we could actually do it. We have to look at the, at the fees and the, the figures. But at this point, the city has quoted us where we paid three hundred ninety-eight dollars last year. This year, we'd be paying sixteen hundred.
Okay, thank you, I ask you to be.
No, that makes more sense now, I understand it's because we haven't adopted this yet. And so with no, with no waivers for anybody and paying the full price, then of course it'd be sixteen hundred dollars. But they would now, instead of eighty percent, they'd be paying fifty percent, so they'd still be getting a discount, it's just going to be thirty percent more than what they did last year. Thank you.
Are you, do you have what you need?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. All right. Without a need for a motion, then, thank you for that, then I think, uh, we can close this item. And we will move to item eight C, and that is, setting a date for a special council meeting for goal setting.
Thank you, Mayor, and city council members. Typically, the city council holds a goal-setting session once per year. Last year, uh, it was held on March the twenty-first, and at your April fifth meeting, you, um, adopted three main goals for this upcoming year. One was to pursue a structurally sustainable budget. A second one was to identify what it takes to support staff in terms of technology and tools to bring the city into the twenty-first century. And the third goal was to present a compliant housing element to the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So, uh, at this next goal-setting session that we are proposing, the council set for March the thirteenth, uh, at three thirty PM, we would review these goals as well as, uh, establish new goals for the upcoming year. My recommendation, uh, now, having been here almost three weeks, so I know it's a long time for me to know exactly what you all need and want, is that we would hold this goal-setting session in the third floor at City Hall, up in the conference room, with the area out in front of it to be available for staff and for the public to attend. That we would videotape the session so that it, uh, could be reviewed at a future time, but we don't have the capabilities to do something similar to this with a hybrid meeting in that location. That I would be the facilitator of the, um, of the meeting, I'm not a professional facilitator, but I think I could, um, do a good job for you all, if that's what you would want to do. And, uh, and then just that you would confirm the, the, the date and the time and the location. So those are three things I'd like for you to consider and give direction on so that we can, uh, establish this. This would be a, um, special city council meeting, so we would have to notice it ahead of time and, uh, and follow certain protocols with the meeting. So with that, I'd be happy to, um, receive direction from you all, please.
Questions at this time?
Yeah, I've got, uh, just two quick questions. One is, um, so we'll make sure that we publicize it, um, because it is in the afternoon, that might not be conducive for people to show up. But they can certainly send questions right ahead of time, um, that we can answer. And then, if we do record it, which I do think is a good idea, is that for our benefit or for us to then post on the city website the next day, so that somebody can actually watch it?
So, so the intent would be that it would be for the benefit of the community that would, wouldn't have been able to attend it, to be able to see what happened at the meeting, as well as for the city council?
Thank you.
Is there any public comment, uh, allowed during the goal-setting session at the goal-setting meeting?
Yes, but it would limit, be limited just to the topic of the special meeting, so it would be for the goal-setting.
Okay. At this time, I'd open this, uh, item up for public comment. If there's anyone that has public comment on this item, uh, feel free to step forward. Janet?
Mayor Juan, I do not have any hands raised on this item.
Okay, I will close public comment and bring it back for discussion, does there?
I have had numerous people speak to me after last year's goal-setting meeting about, uh, the format and, and how it went, and, and both the content and the conclusions associated with it. And so, the fact that there have been numerous people who have asked me about it means that there are numerous people who are very interested in, in the process, and who we are, and how we think as a council, and what we want for our city. It would be a complete disservice to our citizens if it weren't broadcast live, and if they didn't have the ability to at least ask a question during public con, contact during that meeting. And because of that, I would welcome a hybrid type of meeting. And if that can't be done in either one of our two conference rooms, then we need to be able to do it here in a, in a comfortable situation, not like this, but maybe, you know, you know, a round, a roundtable dialogue conversation, which the, uh, city, uh, participants, our, our residents could watch. That's my take.
Yeah, in the past, we've had the goal-setting session both in the first floor of City Hall and the third floor, and then we've also had it here. So, in my limited experience, that's kind of how we've done it. I don't think any year we've done it the same way, so it's always been a little different. When we're here in this format, I, I've, it's my view that it's a little bit less conducive to discussion. And so, in the conference room, in the, sorry, in the third floor conference room, where it's not mics, it's not cameras, it's a little bit easier to have a discussion rather than, um, like this. I, I, for my preference, the ability to have dialogue is more important at a goal-setting, rather than pontificating here at the lectern. So, that's, that's kind of, uh, the direction that I was leaning towards, but I entertain any, any suggestion. But if we do want it here, and we want it to have, you know, like, this hybrid meeting, it would be in the evening, because otherwise it would be during the day. So, um, I can go all night. So if we want to do it at night, we can, we can do it right, roll from a regular council meeting straight into a goal-setting, and we can, we can just bang it out until we're done, that's okay too. So, those are, and that's one of the things, because if we do it here, we do have to essentially do it in the evening, and it would probably be after a regularly scheduled council meeting. We could also schedule a special meeting at a different evening time too, so.
Why do we have to do it in the evening here?
Well, if you want to, for participation during the day, when people are working, or doing whatever they do during the day, uh, I think you'll get, you will have less ability to participate in general, I think. But if we want to have people be able to come after work and, and participate, you would, you know, you would aim towards the evening. But.
I don't know that I necessarily think that, I think we all agreed earlier that having more access and having it on Zoom, et cetera, and having it hybrid affords people more access to us regardless of where they are. So even if somebody had a harder time leaving their office because they have to be visible in the office for their boss, they can at least still get on and watch it possibly from their offices and still participate. Um, I will share that, I know that even for our special meeting that we had last week, even though it was a closed session, I had people saying, where's the Zoom? How come there's no Zoom on there? There's no link. And I said, because I, you need to come show up at the first floor, here at City Hall. And so they didn't understand how come, even though they couldn't make it down here, why, why are we not allowing the public access to us? Um, I, I disagree that it have to be a nighttime meeting if we had it in here. I do agree that this is, this formation is a little klugey. But I don't see why we couldn't make it comfortable in here. I, I'm thinking about the third floor conference room, and it, yes, it's tight, yes, we can get in there, but I also don't envision anyone coming to sit out in that lobby area to look at us. And I also don't know really how recording that really works.
We did have four people come the last time we did it on the third floor.
Okay.
They, they sat outside of the.
Was that pre or post?
It was pre.
Pre-COVID, right?
It was pre.
Yeah, and so I think that COVID kind of changed the dynamic, dynamic on how we have meetings, right? And so everyone's used to having access to us, um, being able to, to watch it. And even though they can only comment during the public portion, comment at the very beginning, I still do, I, I think that them having a, a window into what we're saying and doing, and, and, I mean, I don't necessarily need the, the things to pan. I think if we set us kind of in a round table with maybe just two of these, and we can kind of sit around the rectangles like we did on the first floor, have it still at three thirty in the afternoon is fine with me, I don't think we have to roll in from a, a council meeting and change the date. But I like having it here. It just, I just think it gives us access hybrid, and we don't have to worry about somebody trying to sit there and set up a tripod or whatever we're going to do on the third floor.
Well, and also the, um, presentation, did I cut you off? I am so sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead, Jim.
No, you go ahead, you're on.
I, I just, uh, it's also going to include all of the department heads as well, correct? So, um, my only concern with that third floor conference room is us sitting around a table and all the department heads, and then anybody from the public, is there enough room to accommodate all that? So that's really my only comment.
I guess I don't have a problem with where you have the, or we propose to have this, uh, goal-setting session. What I'd like to know is what happened to the last two that we paid various amounts to consultants? I've never seen a product, unless, unless I lost it someplace.
I, I would say, that's not germane to this topic.
I know, we'll, okay, I'll refrain, so it doesn't matter where we have it, as long as, if we're going to document it, that we all get a copy of it. we all get a copy of it when it's all said and done.
Okay. Is this facility available at that date or that time to set up? Yes.
I'm being told by our city clerk, yes, it is.
I saw, I saw her done. Okay. I, I'm, if we want to do it here, it's fine. I mean, I think it, it, you know, we'll have to set up something a little different, maybe? Actually, we don't have to, we could leave it like this.
The last time we did it, we had a horseshoe.
Yeah, we had a horseshoe, I remember. And that was fine. Either way, it's not really a big deal, I don't think, so.
I'm open, just documentate, just documentation.
I don't think last year was facilitated. I think our city manager facilitated it last year, not the year before we had a facilitator. So I think you were, I think that, that, that was.
Again, not germane.
I'm just, just, just making a point. And just to another point that was made, there is nothing about this mic or this room that would limit me from being able to say what I want to say that's on my mind. And I'm looking forward to our goal-setting session.
Okay. Do you have what you need?
Let me make sure. It's going to be here, 3:30, March 13th, and it will be televised and Zoom accessible to the public. Yes, all right, I have what I need, thank you.
All right. And I would suggest that for each of us that we bring forward any of the goals that you would like to advance from a council. And then I, I've asked Ron to collect the same from staff because I think it's important to incorporate both sides of that as it may, those may relate to one another. So don't tell anyone ahead of time because we're not supposed to do that, but, you know, have it in your mind. You could bring it and be prepared to talk about it.
And, and really, the last question I have, because I was a facilitator, so if you need any help, I'd be happy to help you, is we are going to be clear on what our objectives are and a timeline and so that, because it's one thing to set goals, it's another thing to execute. So we are going to have some deliverables right at the end of that, I'm assuming.
I think the deliverables will be at a minimum, a documentation of what we agreed to. Whether or not, you know, our goals are attainable, I think is up to us. We can have very lofty goals.
Fair enough, yes.
Okay. And I don't think we need a motion on this one either. So next, so I will close that item 8C and move on to council items. This is limited to requests for future meetings. Does anyone have anything that they would like to request for future meetings?
Just a reminder that when we get into budget discussions in the future, we do have a request from the principal of DVMS for crossing guard conversation. Just want to keep that on mind.
Is that specifically for the one exit that has the, the jungle crossing right in front of DVMS?
We'll get a very specific request from him and what that looks like, but he called me and asked for it.
Okay, sounds good.
And then I've had, you guys will all recall, there was a gentleman who spoke a few months ago about speeding on Regency and had inquired about speed bumps. He's reached out again. I know that Sergeant Shaw spoke to him that same night, but he is, I, I do want to have a further conversation about speeding. It dovetails into what we talked about at the end of our last meeting. So if we can bring that back.
Okay. All right. With that, I will close item nine and move on to council reports. I will start on the right this time. Councilor.
Did you raise your hand?
I'm raising my hand now.
Please.
Just a few things. One of the committees I'm going to be sitting on this year is the East Contra Costa County Habitat Conservancy, and I met with the executive director on February 13th. And she and I mutually determined that because I, and this was really my decision, because I have never sat on the committee, I wasn't comfortable chairing the committee. So I'm going to be this year's vice chair and next year's chair. So I have a full year to listen and learn and, you know, get to know the committee. So Diane Burgess is going to be this year's chair. And we're having our first board meeting on the 27th of February. I attended the, on February 14th, the Clayton Community Library Foundation Board Meeting, which was great. I got to meet all the ladies and they're a wonderful group. And tomorrow, Ron and I have a two o'clock meeting with them to get a tour of the library and learn a little bit more about what they need from us and talk about, they received a generous grant from county, former county supervisor Karen Mitchoff in the terms of $250,000 over a five-year period. So they want to talk about the best way to spend that. I attended the special city council meeting on February 16th where we were talking about city manager recruitment. And today I had a lovely meeting with CW from CBCA to talk about Concerts in the Grove. And also Ron and I have a meeting with PG&E tomorrow, so more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Diaz?
Very quickly, I had a number of meetings over the past couple of weeks. The first one, on the 8th, the Morgan Territory Association and I and the chief of police met and we're moving forward to jump-starting the CERT program. And I want to make one thing announcement that on next Monday, the 27th of February here in this hall, will be a informational meeting on CERT. And the chief and a number of other people will be present. And I think it's been advertised on some social media. So with anybody that's interested in going through the rigorous training that CERT requires, come on down and listen to the presentation and see if it's something of interest. On the 13th, had a meeting with the city manager on a number of items. On the 8th, excuse me, the 15th, I attended the Contra Costa Fire Protection District's Academy Number 58, where they graduated 28 more firefighters. I have to compliment Chief Burchard and the entire staff over there. They are building a bench so that they can fill in when people retire. And 28 new firefighters. And it's very impressive. If you've never attended, to find out how, what training over four months that a firefighter must go through in order to qualify. It's incredible. And there's a good, another good group coming through. On the 16th, attended the County Connection Board Meeting. And at that meeting, one of the things notably, we granted the general manager a pay increase of about 5%. And then finally, today, I had meetings both with the city manager and the police chief to discuss tonight's meeting and future things for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Tillman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mine is relatively brief, although it was quite busy. I've met a couple of times with our city manager as well as with our, one time with our community development director, also had an update meeting with the folks from Rainbow Community Center as well, in regards to Pride and the Pride event we're going to have on June 4th. I've also met with Congressman DeSagne. I happen to be at a, an event for Opportunity Junction where he presented them with over a $400,000 check for a grant. And after that, I had a conversation with him about getting grant funding for our local schools as it relates to bullying and racist commentary, which is what I shared with all of the council here. We had an incident that I shared with all of you, that something happened at Diablo View Middle School on February 2nd. The Mount Diablo Unified School District is now handling that, not only the superintendent, but as well as the board trustee, Acacia Nzeiwe. We also had, they had a town hall this evening. It could still be going on right now. Prior to that, we had a rally. And so I'm telling you all of that because I know I've shared as part of the liaison work that I do with the school district, I'm on the A-Bar Committee, which is an anti-bias, anti-racist committee. And I have shared that on not only my social media and talked about it in these chambers, but I'm very adamant that we have to have conversations about this in Tampa, down, and whether people want to hear about it or not, I'm still going to keep using my voice to do that. And I would hope that everybody sitting on this dais would agree with me that racism has no place here in our community. So as there are more developments on that and if we actually do get funding from the senator, I will, I'm not the senator, the representative, I will bring that to you guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Clough?
So on February 9th, I chaired the Transpac meeting and looking forward to having council member Trupiano join me in future meetings. We did pass the draft central action, Central County Action Plan, which will then be passed on to CCTA, which will mold it into all the other committees to have a full county plan. On February, on the 15th, Cub Scout PAC 262 welcomed me to have a conversation with them at the elementary school. And their, their theme was meet a government community leader, learn about their role in the community and discuss an important issue facing their community. So it was truly a pleasure talking to the Cub Scouts and having them learn a little about Clayton's history and a little about what we do as council members. Appreciate our, our special city council meeting was good, good and productive. Had some really good conversations with our residents, specifically regarding the incident at the middle school and, and the dialogue that it's brought up in conversations with parents, conversations with parents and their kids about what happened and how to prevent it, how to react. Even my daughter and I have had some great conversations about it relative to where she is and how she would act in a similar situation. It's good to have those conversations. And I'm, I'm glad that council member Tillman is sparking the dialogue that needs to be had. I am spearheading Clayton Cleans Up. It is happening on Earth Day. We have a logo in place. We have CBCA and Republic Services who have, have decided to help sponsor it and we're looking forward to having that. We'll have T-shirts. It'll show up at nine o'clock on April 22nd and there'll be a barbecue put on by Public Services at noon. I'm looking forward to everybody being available. I've talked to the, our local VFW posts and they're going to make that Community and Service Day the same day and, and join us there. And speaking of talking to our VFW, Mark and Helen Steinberg, who kind of run that, that group, have asked us specifically to use, well, they've used our Clayton flagpole right down there next to the Bachi Courts on Memorial Day for, for many years to hoist the flag. Last year, they moved it to Toto Santos for their 100-year celebration, but they want to come back to Clayton and because of the crowd they had out there visiting, they would like to use the Grove and to just have people show up in lawn chairs and show it for an hour on Memorial Day, which is May 29th. It's a public ceremony. Anybody who wants to come and, and, and listen and be there, they would like to use the Grove for free that day for a public ceremony. I'm all in favor of that. If you have any challenges with that, please get ahold of our city manager for a future discussion, but I would love to be able to tell them, yes, by all means, come and use Clayton and, and anybody in Clayton who wants to participate in Memorial Day there would be, would be a fabulous event for us. That's the end of my report.
Thank you. A lot of meetings with staff and, and various folks. Been talking a lot lately about our investment policy and some choices that we're able to make, so hopefully we'll have more news on that soon. I, I've been working with the, a member of the Mount Diablo PFC regarding their upcoming auction. So they're bringing back their mayor for a day and I suggested that we offer them, in addition to what is normally provided, that we offer them a sixth car in our parade. So that'll be, we'll, we'll print something fun for them to, to ride in, in the parade. Hopefully that generates a lot of dollars for the school. They also asked about involving our fire department or Station 11 as well. And so I, I put them in contact with Chief Burchard on how, how they may participate if they're, if they're able to. I'm glad to see that the closure of City Hall to the public on Wednesday was able to be executed and hopefully that provides staff at least a slight benefit and able to concentrate on work without being disturbed. So those are some of the things that have been going on and that is the end of my report. So thank you very much. That concludes item 10. We have no closed session and I will adjourn the meeting at 8:45. Thank you.